Our meeting for Tuesday, July the 21st at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, all the Commissioners are present along with the County Manager and County Attorney. Our invocation this evening, ladies and gentlemen, will be by Chaplain Ken Day. And after Ken does the invocation, our Girl Scout Troop 2023 with April Buchanan as the Trooper Leader, pardon me, will do our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will stand with me, we'll do the invocation. Immediately after the invocation, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Mother Ken?
The Apostle Paul gave instruction to Pastor Timothy on how to pray for our leaders. And he said, "I urge then, first of all, that all petitions and prayers and intercession and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives and all godliness and holiness. This is good and it pleases God, our Savior. Let us pray." Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you that you help our County Commissioners to accept wise counsel. Teach them to trust in you, Almighty God, and protect them from the influences of the evil one. Give the Commissioners discretion, foresight, understanding in making decisions for our county. Generously answer their prayers for the wisdom they ask for. Pour out your Spirit on their leadership for wise counsel. Deliver them from opinions contrary to your word. God, protect them from harm and their family, and bless their families and protect those families. Enable our Commissioners to carry out their duties with humility towards you and toward others, and bless them with strength, endurance, and stamina. Father, equip them to act according to your will and to make choices that are pleasing to you. Give them the courage to do the right thing, Lord, when in urge to do the wrong thing. And finally, Mighty God, give them a tender heart of compassion toward those that they lead and serve in Burke County. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Face this way.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is sent, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, ladies. If you'll remain right there, we're going to come down and take a picture with you, if that's okay. We'll be right there. Parents, come on up so you can get you some good pictures. for me. Make sure they're off. And if you have to use the microphones, please speak slowly and distinctly real close to these microphones at the table and at the podium. Gentlemen, you have in front of you two sets of minutes. We have the May 19th, 2015 Board of Commissioners' Regular Meeting and the May 20th Board of Commissioners' Recession Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That'll be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. We need an approval of the agenda. There is one item that was added, that was item number 15, which was the County Manager, the Justice Center Funding piece. And I think everybody's had time to see that. Am I correct? If so, we will entertain a motion for the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, and as you see it with the added item.
All right, you heard Manager's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. It'll be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to presentations, we have no presentations tonight. We'll move into number seven, our scheduled public hearings. Our first public hearing will be a building reuse grant for Sparta Craft in a public hearing, and that will be presented by Allen Wood, Executive Director of BDI. Allen?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Manager, and Clerk, and County Attorneys. Good to see you all out this evening, and I appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to talk to you about Sparta Craft. I will tell you that these folks are very aggressive. He actually reached out to me before I even took the job in March, wanting to talk to me about an extension. So he was the first industry, this was the first industry that I visited, actually the first week that I was in town. They have been in Conley Springs for about 10 years. They take an old impact furniture building, and they make custom cabinetry, furniture, door finishes, displays, especially flag displays. And I can tell you from experience that it's amazing to walk through their shop. You see a lot of one-off kind of products that you don't see very many places, really rare finishes. When I was in there that day, they were doing gold leaf on chairs. And they take a team approach with their workers. They will move teams from spot to spot, and they've done a good job upfitting an old building that would otherwise have become an eyesore, I think, in the community. This company currently has 45 employees. This project would add 20 more to that base, a minimum of 20 more. Their average salary for these jobs would be about $31.5 per year. That's a little over $600 a week, and that they will pay 75% of those employees' health care. They're requesting a $200,000 building reuse grant. It would be a 10, a 5%, I'm sorry, yeah, a 5% match, which would be $10,000. The total project is about $411,000. From that, they're going to do air conditioning work, electrical, new windows, air compressor upgrades, upgrade their dust collection, put in LED lighting, improve their fire suppression, and paint. This would be their second building reuse grant. They received one for $60,000 in 2012. They added 12 jobs at that time, and that grant has been successfully completed and closed out. We had to respond very quickly on this one. It's got the timing just a little bit out of kilter. We were called on July the 2nd. We had to have the application submitted by the 7th and had to have a pre-conference call two days later. So we really had to jump, and our folks with the COG did a wonderful job getting this all together. I have the pre-app here. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those for you.
All right, Allen, if you'll remain there for just a moment. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the building reuse grant for Sparta Craft? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, the public hearing is closed. Gentlemen, questions for Allen on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, no questions. Just thank him again for the 20 jobs. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you have a gentleman here from Sparta Craft, if he'd like to address the board?
You certainly may, if you'd like to. Allen? Would your owner of Sparta Craft like to say anything? Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions for Allen regarding this matter? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the adopted resolution number 2015-13, appropriate $10,000 of general fund, fund balance for the local grant match.
All right, you've heard Jess's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much, Allen.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our informal public comment sections. Madam Clerk, is anybody signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. I would call Jesse Fisher to the podium. There he is.
Good evening. My name's Jesse Fisher. My wife and I own and operate Fisher Mobile Home Park in the Salem community. I've spoken to you before about the jail. I've noticed you're getting more open forum in the paper and also articles by the mayor. I would encourage you to stay the course and build this Justice Center out on Government Drive like it's being proposed to do and not to back away from it. Second thing, I understand part of this loan would be used to build an East Burke Senior Center and a library. I would encourage you not to use the money for that, to put that on the back burner. You've got industrial parks been sitting up here between eight and 12 years. There's nothing in it. Build a spec, take part of that money, build a spec building up there so we can get some more jobs in here. Because the jobs are coming back from what I understand, but our population is still down. If you're going to keep the young people here, you're going to have to have something for them to do, that or they're going to leave. And I think the spec building would be more beneficial to the people of the county to get another industry in here, and probably if we could get another one, would pay, and taxes would pay for a senior citizen center down here at East Burke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Bob Hintsman. And Mr. Hintsman also provided the board a handout.
Thank you for letting me come down here and speak. I should probably check and see if you don't have eggs and tomatoes up there to throw over here, because I know you're getting tired of hearing this subject. But I'm down here to talk about the public shooting range. It's come to my attention that there's not been any formal discussion here, voting yea or nay, or that the board's not taking a public stand on the shooting range. So I would like for the board to look at putting the public range up at Wolf Pit Road and have discussion on it. And I'm not familiar with the process down here. I guess you know you've never seen me down here before. So I'm asking you to, if you have to make motions or have committees, or, in other words, give this due consideration, if you would, any other subject in the county. We do need a public shooting range in Burke County. So if you can put that on the regular agenda or do whatever you need to do to make that happen. We have 200, at least $250,000 available to put in a range. I think it, one of the benefits, it would decrease the amount of calls that the Sheriff's Department has. I know they answer a lot of calls out in the county because somebody's shooting in their backyard, and if they go and they see that they're shooting in a safe area and it's on their own property, then all they can do is say, "Good day," and go on because it's not against the law. But I think if we had a public shooting range, a lot of the shooting would go to the range because a lot of people would rather be safe than shoot in their yards. And where I'm really concerned about it is when it gets on it toward hunting season in the fall, when they start shooting these .300 sixes and .270s and the high-powered rifles, getting them ready to go hunting. It would be a lot better to have a safe range to go to, to sight in your weapons if you've got a new scope or that kind of thing. I was in contact with David Hall, and he said that the Burke County Commission was against having a shooting range up at the Wolf Pit Road. I guess the Wildlife Commission's just kind of putting Burke County on hold, and I feel bad about that, too, because I think our county is just as reasonable and good a county as any of the others. I know down in Cleveland County, I think they gave Cleveland County a million dollars on a public range down there, and I think the county went in with them. And I think it was Commissioner Hutchins that spearheaded that. I'm not saying we need to spend another $750,000 here in Burke County, but I would like for us to try to get a range here. There would be a number of citizens, if you need somebody to help with it, what I'm saying is, there's a lot of us would come and help as far as checking out sites or doing whatever it takes to get something going here in the county. But I would like for you to put it on the front burner. 10 years ago, this range probably would have done been built. If you look at your handouts that I gave you, the first meeting on that was June of last year. If the range had went in, we would already be using it to shoot on this year. So it's been over a year that it's been on hold and for whatever reason. And I will tell you that the Wildlife Commission is constantly working on more and more sound suppression technology. Eric Christopherson is the engineer down there. And what I would like for the county to do, no matter where you put it, is get with Eric and see what's the very best thing that we can have to make sure that the noise suppression is at the optimum for what's available now. Anyway, that's my spiel, and I appreciate you listening to me. I'm not much of a speaker, but we do need to get the ball rolling.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else, Kay? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine, the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Bryan Steen. Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have 15 items, I believe it is, on your consent agenda. First is BOC Proclamation ADA 25th Anniversary. BOC Designation of Voting Delegate for the NCACC Annual Conference. Number three, Clerk Commerce Fellows Grant, Western Piedmont Council of Government Administration Contract. Number four, Clerk Appointment to Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team. Number five, Clerk Appointments and Reappointments to Western Piedmont Council of Government Regional Aging Advisory Committee. Number six, County Manager USDA Financing Application Authorizing Resolution. Number seven, JCPC Approval of Pass Through Funding for Barium Springs Home for Children from North Carolina Department of Public Safety. Number eight, JCPC Appointment to JCPC DSS Designee. Number nine, General Services Solid Waste Division Permitting of Phases II-A and IV of the C and D landfill at the Johns River Facility. Number 10, General Services Solid Waste Division Joyce Engineering Annual Services Physical 2016 Contract. Number 11, Health Department Acceptance of Ebola Preparedness and Response Funds. Number 11, Tax EMS Collections Report for May 2015. Number 13, Tax Release Refund Report for June 2015. Number 14, Tax Collections Report for June 2015. And item 15, County Manager Jail and Justice Center Funding, $80,000. That concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Bryan. What's the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Heard Wayne's motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All, yes, sir?
You weren't available that came in. Item number nine and 10, we wanted to approve it, and by when we approved it, it changes nothing except we omitted the fund source, and it needs to include, and Kay says it's no problem, that the funding is coming from general fund on both those items.
On item 10?
And you would add that?
The funding would be coming from the solid waste fund, up in the upper part of the abstract, but it's not listed in the original motion.
Yeah, come from that fund.
Okay. Kay, you do have that? All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much. Moving on to our decision, our first item is Resolution Supporting North Carolina Connect Initiative. Gentlemen, Governor McCray requested the North Carolina General Assembly call for a statewide referendum to be placed on the November ballot so voters could consider two bond issues, one for highway and transportation improvements in the amount of $1.4 billion, and one for various infrastructure improvements in a similar amount. The following resolution in front of us tonight is up for consideration. I'd like to state just a couple of facts. It's been 15 years since the last general obligation bond was authorized to improve public infrastructure, which has resulted in years of deferred investment, and our state's rapidly growing population presents critical infrastructure needs, and new school facilities and superior roads and bridges are long-term investments in the state's future that will support our growth and make North Carolina more attractive to business residents, and no taxes are necessary to finance the bonds, given the ample debt service capacity within our existing revenue profile. And the bonds are well within current debt affordability as determined by the State Treasurer and the Nonpartisan Debt Affordability Committee. And North Carolina has a long and successful history of judiciously using long-term financing to meet its infrastructure needs. And lastly, interest rates are at a historical low, and it has never been less extensive to make these long-term investments. Gentlemen, I went to Raleigh and supported the governor in this initiative, and I ask you for your support in this resolution supporting the ENC Connect Initiative, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. 1.4 million, excuse me, 14.48 million would be our share of the 1.4. All, what percentage is that? Do we get, as 100 counties, do we get equal share?
Well, basically, 10%.
10. It's just a lot of money, and I just, too many times, and I'm just going to say this, that doesn't mean I will not support it. I'm just saying that too many times, when we do these bonds, too much of the money ends up in the big metro counties, and we get so little to spend, and yet we're faced with the burden of paying it all back. So I don't know if it's a fair or a good thing for us, or, you know, I just don't know at this point.
I would suggest to you that it's more than fair to us. We're getting a lot more in Burke County than some counties are getting. Some counties are not getting, but it depends on which road or which infrastructure they're trying to do, they're not getting as much as we are. But 14.48 million for us was a good chunk.
It lists those products, by the way, for those of you who want to follow it. It does list the projects that will be done in Burke County.
Any other questions or comments? It's a pleasure of the board on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adopted resolution number 2015-12.
All right, you heard Jess's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That'd be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number two, is Community Development Funding for the Comprehensive Relicensings Project Fonta Flora Loop Trail Design and Implementation, presented by Brock Hall, City Operations Manager. Brock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, Duke Energy's in the process of getting relicensed through FERC for the Lake James area. And in that comprehensive relicensing agreement, Duke has committed $100,000 to Burke County to be used for CRA projects, and one of the projects that Duke has identified is our Fonta Flora Loop Trail. That money is available now. It's available prior to the relicensing approval, and Duke would like to go ahead, and they've already got it set aside for us. They would like to go ahead and appropriate that money this calendar year. That money, if approved, would be used for a Destination by Design Concept Trail Plan and starting out the implementation of the trail on the county land at Lake James. For that money to be approved, it has to be on a reimbursement basis. In other words, the county would have to put the $100,000 up front, and then once we've set that money aside, then we can ask for reimbursement from Duke, and Duke has confirmed to us that they will reimburse us on that money. I spoke to Mark Oakley today, and he confirmed that information to me with Duke Energy, and the Deputy County Manager spoke to Mark Oakley as well. And Mark is sending us a formal letter to have, within the next 10 days, he's going to confirm that information to us as well. I have with me here tonight, Mr. Eric Woolridge. He's from Destination by Design, and he's got some examples of the plan that would be used, or that would be, that he would come up with for our trail. And he's willing to answer any questions, and he's got maybe about a couple-minute, five-minute presentation, if you would like to see that.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Good evening. A pleasure to be here this evening. Good evening to all of you. Eric Woolridge with Destination by Design. We are a planning, design, economic development promotions firm. We're based in Boone. We do a lot of work throughout the southeast, a lot in western North Carolina. Scott wanted me to come, maybe provide a few concepts or ideas of the type of work that we do. I think I'm working this thing right. It'll work for me. Oh, here we go. Maybe it's just a little slow.
You may have to hold it up and aim it toward the back one. Is that good? Does that work better?
I don't know. Looks like it's pushing forward. We'll see if it backs up. But the scope of work that Scott has wanted us to engage in, using the Duke money, really involves about two or three parts. One of those is to develop some detailed construction documents related to the Fonta Flora Trail, the whole 26-mile trail itself. The other component is to create an actual pilot trail section, which we would bring in the trail crews and kind of establish the trail character for what this 26-mile loop is going to look like, which I'm sure, as you all are aware, is going to be designated as a state trail upon completion. The goal here is to create a destination-quality trail, a trail which is built at such a standard in terms of its features, its design, in which it attracts people from outside of the region to come here and spend money. We spent a lot of time working with local governments, small businesses, and industry in western North Carolina, not only trying to promote the tourism industry, but also trying to promote the manufacturing industry as it relates to outdoor products and goods. We think that what you all are doing here in terms of these types of investments, particularly as you're able to leverage Duke Power money, is just a phenomenal opportunity, and not really one that I see very often that comes across the table. I wanted to provide just a few examples of work that we've done across the region. Most of these are here in this area. One of those is for the Blue Ridge Parkway, the Boone Fork Trail, which maybe many of you have walked. It's a very popular trail. We redesigned, redeveloped a good portion of that trail that had some pretty major issues. Rocky Knob Mountain Bike Park up in Boone, it's a $2 million bike park facility. Now, based on three to five years of baseline data, we see that it's about a $1.5 million economic impact each year to the economy there. So what we see there is a fantastic return on investment. Also want to talk about the Mountains of Sea Trail real quick. Stone Mountain to Pilot Mountain is about a 70-mile trail segment that we conducted for North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation, and those partners and those local communities that are, again, trying to leverage that trail to bring people into those economies and so forth. Then finally, the Overmountain Victory National Historic Trail. We've been working with Lenore, Caldwell County, Gamewell, Morganton, and Burke County as well to develop that plan. I'm going to show you a few images, renderings, that have not been shown yet publicly related to that project, but we'll be publishing that plan here very soon, and it's actually on Scott's desk, being reviewed at this moment. Real quick, the Boone Fork Trail. Again, this is a five-mile trail that we did some redesign work for, also working with the Watauga County Tourism Development Authority. This thing is not going to flow with me, I don't feel like. Do you think we can push from back there? See if that works? Maybe we can, yeah. So again, a five-mile loop trail here, Boone Fork Trail, one of the most popular trails on the Blue Ridge Parkway. Again, not trying to bore you, like detailed construction documents. So as the contractor comes in, as we go after bids, we have a very clear set of guidelines to make sure and ensure that the trail is bid at a very to make sure and ensure that the trail is bid at a very fair rate and that, of course, the county gets, you know, the most out of their money as well. Detailed specs regarding any bridge features, any crossings and so forth. Here's just an example of clearing out trail on the Boone Fork, and then what that's looking like. And we can just kind of keep on going through some of these. Again, some of the nice features there. Rocky Knob Mountain Bike Park, again, this is a $2 million facility right near the edge of town of Boone that's relatively new project. Again, we use a lot of volunteer labor to come out and clear the trail, then we'll bring in professional trail crews to actually finish out the trail product. Again, using volunteer labor, professional trail crews, saving money, getting the community involved and so forth. And what you have is really a project and a trail system that starts to sell. Again, I told you, we're really into volunteer labor, of course. One of the things we try to do with this project is really create a unified architectural theme. So whether or not you're at the mountain bike park or you're at another recreation facility, you start to feel like you're part of a system. And so when you start to implement that type of plan over five, 10, 15, 20 years, you start, people start to feel more secure. They feel like they're coming into a real, true recreation destination. And those are some of the ideas that we want to bring to the forefront. We're also not afraid to say, wait another year or two to create something that's distinctive, something that's unique, something that's going to be memorable as well. We're not opposed to putting up facilities that are simple, that are affordable, but we're also not afraid to design something that's bold and that's going to be lasting as well. This park gets a tremendous amount of use. We spent a lot of time on, a lot of the interpretive signage inside the park as well to make sure users feel safe. There's a small pump track facility there that got national press as well. You know, these small projects cost $5,000 to $8,000 that get a tremendous amount of views from a publicity standpoint. And you can just see some of the pictures there associated with this. This is a multi-use facility. And then if we can stop right there, then we start to create these kind of facilities, and then we, from a PR standpoint, all of a sudden, we find ourselves in magazines and articles and newspapers and so forth all across. We've been in the Washington Post and some of the major bike publications just from this one small investment. So again, how do you build on that infrastructure to create that kind of promotional element as well? Real quick, Stone Mountain to Pilot Mountain. It's an example of a kind of a reuse of an existing bridge and the type of renderings and drawings that we do. Next slide. As we try to repurpose, a lot of these, a lot of this infrastructure that was built for massive manufacturing infrastructure now can be, you know, basically put on a diet. And kind of how do we repurpose that into creating community and creating healthy areas and so forth? Again, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the design that we'll be working through and so forth. The Overmountain Victory National Historic Trail, again, we're going to, I'm going to show you, start in Lenore and come all the way down Lower Creek, come into Morganton and bring you all the way to Lake James real quick on just some of the design schematics that we've developed there. In Lenore, basically using the old rail trail to completely repurpose the manufacturing area there, the old train depot, a farmer's market, basically using the trail as the impetus for the redevelopment itself, some of the old manufacturing buildings there. And I'm sure Alan knows the new P3 legislation and some of these public-partner partnerships, your ability to come in and really get the development community to do what you want them to do. A lot of those opportunities exist along this entire rail corridor. So again, how do we bring a lot of these elements to life? Major stream issues along Lower Creek, it's impaired. Again, how do you take a negative and turn it into an absolute positive? So we spent a lot of time trying to communicate these ideas and issues, not only for you all here locally. I'm sure you all are familiar with the Lake James Family Campground, Powerhouse Road, the need to build the side path incorporating the branding, Bridgewater, of course, will need to have a bike ped facility, Watermill Road Access. You know, how do we turn that into a real river access destination quality? So again, those are some of the ideas, concepts that we're going to be bringing to life. Well, we are bringing to life here in Burke County. Scott's been a great partner, obviously very enthusiastic about these projects. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to come speak and provide a background on that. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Eric? Gentlemen?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. I have been to the Rocky Knob Trail. It's fantastic. Nice job.
Chairman, a comment also, you know, this is being divided by one of our good corporate partners, Duke Power, Crescent, and it's just a great advantage for Burke County to be able to do this and very little, if any, tax dollars being appropriated to it.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the appropriation of $100,000 for the upfront cost of design and implantation of the Fanta Flora Loop Trail with reimbursements of those costs by Duke Power. To approve a contract with Destination By Design in the amount of $100,000 to provide these designs and implantation services for Fanta Flora Loop Trail. I also just noted, it doesn't say where we're going to get those funds. Are they coming for the general fund balance?
No, it's supposed to be written first on paper because of the money that was spent with this cash flow, with this upfront.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Mayor's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on, item number three is the modification of the Burke County Public Schools Memorandum of Agreement School Security presented by Bryan Steen County Manager and Keith Lawson, School Finance Officer.
Mr. Lawson will be walking up just a minute, but gentlemen, what you've got here, these amounts were appropriated in the budget that was adopted in June. And what has happened is, the memorandum of agreement had specific wording, and what the school system has asked is if they could have some flexibility in the wording related to the appropriation that addresses school resource officers. And Keith can go into why they're requesting the flexibility. But there is, this is not new money. You're not voting whether to give it to them or not. It's just about the language in the memorandum of agreement to give them flexibility as to how they spend the $200,000 that was associated with school resource officers and security at the school system. That's all this is about.
All right, Keith, you may go ahead and explain why we need the language limited, but, excuse me, including but not limited to school safety needs.
Good evening, Chair, county commissioners, county administration. Thank you for entertaining me this evening. I am standing in again this evening for Mr. Putnam. We, first, let me clarify, there was an article in today's papers. I just want to clarify, and I appreciate you, Mr. Steen, explaining that, but let me further say that, again, we're not, this in no way involves asking for additional funding from you all. You all have already approved your allocation to the school system for the '15, '16 fiscal year. There was one statement in the paper that $100,000 was being allocated for one additional nursing position, of which we're losing funding for. I'm sure that nurse wishes it was $100,000, and if it were, I certainly would consider a change of careers. What that involves specifically is one additional nursing position, but in addition to that position is that when a nurse joins public school systems in North Carolina, they have up to three years to gain national certification. Upon gaining that national certification, it's a state-mandated 15% wage increase for that nurse. We've had all of our nurses, as of our current, as of this current time, achieve that status, which has resulted in a significant increase in our overall nursing cost. Again, that's a legislated, state-mandated issue. Again, it's one of those issues where the state approves something like that, but then they don't necessarily fund it. And that's where we come to you all, asking for additional funding. In addition to that, there was $200,000, which was specifically earmarked for safety resource officers. Over the last two years, we have not utilized local funding for safety resource officers as a result of a state grant which was awarded these last two years. This past year, that consisted of $208,000. For this coming '15, '16 fiscal year, that grant funding is gone. So that is why the additional request was put in the local budget. Then, based on our local budget and the funding received and the unknowns in our state budget, we had asked for flexibility in the language of that funding, so it was not specifically earmarked or mandated for safety resource officers. Not that we would make that decision one way or the other. We just simply requested the flexibility in those funds in order to be able to most efficiently and effectively respond to a state budget when we do receive that. Of about a $100 million annual budget for Burke County Public Schools, about $70 million of that is state, are state funds. Obviously, over the last few years, as funding shrinks, the state has given us flexibility on how we use those funds. And again, our request to you all on that $200,000 and that change in language was just an extension of that flexibility extended by the state in giving us other options if, if need be, to utilize those funds. Sorry to ramble on there, but I hope that made some sense, and I'm certainly entertained any questions that you may have.
All right, gentlemen, questions for Brian or Keith?
Keith, I tell you, I had lots of questions, but I made a promise to Paul, I wouldn't make an issue of them tonight. So I'll call you maybe sometime, but I've got the answers to most of my questions.
Okay.
And I understand the flexibility request.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Well, Keith, I got a question. What's a safety resource officer? I think that's the first time I've heard it.
We refer to them as SRO, Safety Resource Officer. What that is, whether it's a contract officer or whether it's a county deputy, basically that is a sworn law enforcement officer.
Come up with new words all the time, but I guess when it comes to money, it's a good thing to do that because that confuses people, and they don't know what you're talking about, and they go along with it. But I, members of this board, I am concerned about these SROs, School Resource Officers, whether they're put in there by the sheriff's department or a private provider. Now, if you take a sheriff's deputy, put him in a resource officer, that would cost the taxpayers something like $60,000 per individual, per year. If you figure the salary and the maintenance and upkeep of a vehicle, it'd probably be over $60,000 it would cost for each resource officer that the sheriff puts in that school building over there. Now, when you go out here to private enterprise, private provider, and get the same type of officer for $30,000. So it doesn't make sense for folks to hire deputies for that when we can get it for... In other words, we get two for the price of one if we went to the provider. And my wife is, she really goes for it, two for one when she goes to the grocery store. And I don't know where, I keep telling her, you're not getting a deal there, but she believes that. But in this case, it is true because it's a proven fact. You can hire one, $30,000, you have no, no other issues with that. It's, provider takes care of them, and we have nothing to do. It's totally controlled by them. But where the sheriff comes in, he's got ten there now, and he has a great need for other officers throughout this county. He always tells me, I know he doesn't have enough officers to cover and provide protection for these people out here in the county. So it doesn't make sense to me and why we do this. I don't know any businessman would buy into something like this. And I don't know why we do. And I've heard members of this board speak many times. We are, what do they call it? Provide, or look out for the taxpayers' dollar? For the taxpayers? But this doesn't show that, though. If we approve these people going to the school, watching after the kids, $60,000, we're not doing that. Doesn't make sense to me, and something has to be done to do that, towards our concern. And of course, when we got the information, like Maynard said, in the summary, it says one nurse. And I was like Maynard and Keith. I don't see why everybody would go in a nurse if you get $100,000 a year. But it would take a little more time to break that down exactly where that $100,000 was going to for the nurse, and people would have questions. And I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, in the future, we kind of take a look at that so we won't be confused, and I'm very easily confused. And sometimes it takes me a heartbeat, sometimes it gets unconfused. So that's my deal on this. So it's just a waste of taxpayers' money to put sheriff's deputies in those schools. Thank you.
Duly noted. Any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the modification as requested.
All right, gentlemen, you heard Mayor's motion. All in favor, 65 by raising your right hands. All opposed? Madam Clerk, that'd be four to one. Okay. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Let's move on into our reports and comments section. I believe I'll start over to the right. JR?
I don't have any comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, I'm going to bypass you and come back to you. Wayne?
No comment.
Maynard?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was going to comment on what a wonderful vacation I had, but I believe I'll switch to our meeting. Brian and I met with some fine folks at Hildebrand about the new Hildebrand Senior Citizen Center. Had an awfully warm and joyous reception. Roger Holland did an excellent job with presenting the information, and to tell the truth, kind of left there with hugs and kisses. So it was a great experience.
All right.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Jack?
Mr. Chairman, I talked to a human resource officer a week or so ago, and it's been about eight, more than eight years since we had a salary update to have someone to take a look at it and see how we stack up against other counties or either the local people around Morganton. And we hear time and time again, you know, people, they're not getting paid enough. So I think it's about time that we have the HR people to take a look at that, or either have someone to come back and take a look at it and see what to, see how we do stack up. Because eight years are quite a ways, and you know what has happened over those past eight years. So it might be a good time to consider that. That's all I have.
Brian, please put that on your schedule, and me and you and the vice chair will talk about that, okay? Madam Clerk?
None for me, thank you.
All right, Brian, I'm going to come back to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, last Thursday, as I was preparing for a meeting with Greenway Transportation, I had Good Morning America on, and they had about a five-minute broadcast that had to do with Burke County and North Carolina about filming. And Steve, if you would, please show the clip that we got from ABC. If you can blow that up any bigger, that'd be great. We get the audio?
I couldn't run mine either.
Vacation, where we show you how you can turn your summer vacation into movie magic. This morning, ABC Sarah Haines is here to take us to the unforgettable places that made The Hunger Games a blockbuster hit. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning, Amy. First, let's cue the sound effect. You know it, this is a diehard fan's dream, transporting yourself into the actual places where The Hunger Games unfolded, even getting the chance to see some... where The Hunger Games unfolded, even getting the chance to see some of the scenes reenacted up close and personal, the entire journey mapped out and packaged for the most hardcore of Mockingjay's. Welcome to Pan Am, home of The Hunger Games.
Welcome, welcome. Happy Hunger Games.
A fictional dystopia brought to life through the bestseller trilogy turned blockbuster hits, following Katniss and Peeta as they fight to survive in the deadly arena.
There's nowhere I'm wanting to go. Peeta.
The backdrop to the first film installment, none other than North Carolina. And if you're hungry for some games, we've got the seven-stop roadmap to all the action. Rolling in at number seven, District 12, or Henry River Mill, a ticket on The Hunger Games unofficial fan tour gets you access to this abandoned cotton mill village.
This is the exact site where you will see Effie Trinket entering the district a little apprehensively.
Here, you can visit Katniss's house, watch as actors recreate iconic scenes, even sharpen your archery skills.
Families come together to do it as an experience together. Thousands are coming every year.
If you dare, drive to number six, The Arena, or Dupont Skate Forest. Hike to Triple Falls, where tour guides show you where Katniss rescued Peeta.
Peeta.
Hi.
And go for a swim.
While the cast and crew was filming in Dupont, they loved to swim and take a dip here on every break they had.
If you're still feeling adventurous, head on over to number five, Navitac Canopy Adventure, where Josh Hutcherson ziplined through the mountains in his spare time. Wind down at number four, The Hotel Indigo in downtown Nashville. This boutique hotel was where Jennifer Lawrence, Liam Hemsworth, and Josh crawled home for three months while they filmed. You could also catch them cruising titles at number three, Malaprop's Book Store and Cafe, or Feasting on Godzilla Rolls at number two, Wasabi Japanese Restaurant, their go-to sushi spot. End your day at number one, The Southern, where you can enjoy drinks and some live music. Seven hot spots that will leave you hungry for more. Just follow the roadmap and remember...
May the odds be ever in your favor.
Now, one real cool fact here is that Henry River Mill Village is actually up for sale, which is District 12, the whole village. It's an 86-year-old owner that can't keep up with it, but the funny thing is there's no running water, and they say it's haunted.
That's funny, so that's sellable.
It should be cheaper, is what I'm saying. Sarah, thank you so much.
Again, that was a heck of an advertisement for Burke County and North Carolina tourism, and we got that for free.
Good. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Let me remind everyone that we'll be switching our phone services in Burke County from something to AT&amp;T on July 23, and that starts at 2:00 PM, and I think there was an article in the paper notifying the residents of the county that there could be some phone disruption, so let's please remember that. Tomorrow at 6:00 AM, everybody call Jeff Britton's house and say happy birthday, it's his 39th birthday again, so happy birthday, Commissioner Jeff, we appreciate you so much, so remember 6:00 in the morning. Is that okay?
No, that won't be necessary.
On a sidebar, I would like to make mention of the Phantom Girls Fast Pit softball team from Burke County. They actually, this past week, Saturday, won the North Carolina State Championship in softball and will be representing the entire state of North Carolina, these girls from here in Morganton and Burke County. They will be traveling to Fort Myers, Florida for the District Nine Southeast Regional Championships. Morganton Recreation is going to help sponsor that, so they'll be down there if they win on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They will hop a plane the next weekend and go to Delaware for the World's Little League Championships, so I'm proud of our young ladies on this team and especially the chairman's granddaughter. So I wanted to put that in there, too. Any other announcements that need to be made? All right, if not, Madam Clerk, we'll move into our vacancy announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We currently have the following opportunities: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board for the ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, and the Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission.
All right, for those folks that are watching us on TV, I would encourage you to take advantage of these board openings and get in touch with that volunteer spirit and help us on those boards. If there's no other matters to come before it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and before I entertain that motion, I would invite everyone that is here, if you would, to the back room. One of us had his 68th birthday, I won't tell you who that is, and he loves chocolate cake, so there's some in the back, so please step in and get a piece of chocolate cake. So a motion to adjourn? All right.